Host in a parents and I need to do motivation meet develop a system and I will then I and I welcome all of you and I'm so glad that you have found some time for to join us and I hope that you'll all be blessed with this and I would like to welcome Pastor Anand to pray and begin this session by the word of prayer, Pastor, please.
Amen. Praise the Lord. Prarthi kyaam? Nalla pidavi? Iu uchke giriya samayatanaai nengal tiranamathanamni oru stotran chinu rendu muna bairanamathil koodivirunnavara nadevil nannudanu anidavaktham agial nengal tiranamathanamni varuyinu anidavakthil vishushicche kathaavi nengal aduthu vandirikinu Excel ministriesinde adanorulabendutile inu uchke giriya samayat vivida raja jangalilirundu nengal konduche iprakara koodiviruvan anegnangal kerkubanalgialo kathaavi idinde needurtha niregalililkunna nangadaasidhaasenmarkai nengal namni oru devate stotran chinu logavyaavagamai Excel ministries ariyapotta orishisrushagale aithiruvan sarvushaktanam idinithirtolom kathaavi vardi pichadanaal namni oru stotranjin visheshalinnu nadakana UK Ireland lulladaaya kathaavi vivida stalangalilirundu countygalilirundu okay? safagallilirundu nengal priyaputtuvaru unduchu koodi inu uchke giriya samayatuprarthanikeai nangadaasinal kooda i naadugalil nengal kunjungal varthappadiduna nelaya kurichu urikil kooda bodavanmar agenadana nengal kinkinu kramigiranadi urikithanadana aru stotram nangadaasenmar illuridhiyum anikrihikiname visheshal idda director ayikina pastor Binu Joseph ogal kathaavi devate idda ministriesakudupate elladhiyum anikrihikinada prarthikidu but Anilai Sister Samia illa priyadurukai stotran chidu devamellavari manikrihikiname thudundula samaygalidde nammakalke partugal paduvanam maradipanam kathaavi de vajanathu kelkuvan nalaya alojanakal pravichu nengal kumuniruvan nengal kunjungal nalladilil varthiyedukuvan madurgabaaramaayuradilil kunjungal varthappaduvan avishumagunna alojanikai nengal devasani nengalaitaavithunnu nengalayelpikinu shaktamayuridhi devasani nangadu nadevil anupu charivan anusahayikinam anadu chidudugundu stotram nangadaasidhaasenmare pankadukunna elladhiyum akali anukrihikinam karantiyatiyadu chigiala stotram Eshwinanamathanamni nengal chodikibor devudai kalkaname nalla pidavi amen, amen, amen. Thank you and God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you Pastor for your wonderful prayer and I would like to welcome Leah and Kesia. They will be leading us in worship for some time. Let's worship our God in truth and spirit and over to you.
Amen. Thank you for the opportunity that you've all given us. And I thank the Lord that we can worship Him. Anytime, anytime of the day, in whatever country, He will always be there to listen. So God, we are here to worship You. We are here to give You the praise and glory that You deserve, Lord. Lord, this is Your space, Lord, for You to move freely, for You to tell us what we need to hear, Jesus. Holy Spirit, we give You full control, Lord. Holy Spirit, we give You the freedom to move as You want to move, Jesus. We give ourselves to You in this moment, Lord. You are a good God and we are here to worship You right now, Lord Jesus. You are the best gift that humanity has ever received, Lord. So we are gonna sing what gift of grace is Jesus, my Redeemer, the one that gave me salvation. What gift of grace is Jesus, my Redeemer? There is no more for heaven now to give. He is my joy, my righteousness and freedom, my steadfast love, my deep and boundless peace. To this I hope, my hope is only Jesus. All my life is holy bound to His. Oh, how strange and divine I can see all His mind yet not I, but through Christ in me the night is dark, the night is dark, but I am not forsaken, for by My side the Savior He will stay. I labor on in weakness and rejoicing, for in My need His power is displayed. To this I hope, to this I hope, My shepherd will defend me. Through the deepest valley He will lead. And oh, the night has been won and I shall overcome yet not I, but through Christ in me. Oh, the night has been won. And oh, the night has been won and I shall overcome yet not I, but through Christ in me. And no fate I dread, I know I am forgiven. The future sure, the price it has been paid for Jesus' blood and He suffered for my pardon. And He was raised to overthrow the grave. To this I hope, to this I hope, my hope is only Jesus. All the glory evermore to Him. And when the race is complete, still my lips shall repeat yet not I, but through Christ in me. And when the race is complete, still my lips shall repeat yet not I, but through Christ in me. One more time, when the race is complete, when the race is complete, still my lips shall repeat yet not I, but through Christ in me. We give You the glory. What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune We give You praise, God. What the name, what the name Baba maradanetinil udu Jeevanagiyon Baba maradanetinil udu Jeevanagiyon Vankrubekanya nange what the name We give You the glory, Lord. Vankrubekanya nange what the name Vankrubekanya nange what the name Vankrubekanya nange what the name All the glory. Vankrubekanya nange what the name What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune All the glory for you. What the name, what the name En Jeevanshunyamai maru tusamanaamai Tangarikthu talenne talapragamakyon En Jeevanshunyamai maru tusamanaamai Tangarikthu talenne talapragamakyon Vankrubekanya nange what the name I give You the glory, Jesus. Vankrubekanya nange what the name What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune What the name, we give You praise. What the name, what the name What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune Atma shakti paganam Abi shegamalgyon Enne yoginakiyon Atma shakti paganam Abi shegamalgyon Enne yoginakiyon Atma shakti paganam Abi shegamalgyon Enne yoginakiyon Oh, vankrubekanya nange what the name Thank you, Jesus. Vankrubekanya nange what the name What the name, what the name What the name, what the name What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune We give You praise. What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune Last time, let's sing. We give You praise. What the name, what the name Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune Jeevanaghi vinderutthakattune Thank you once again, Lord Jesus, for this wonderful time of worship that You have given us, Lord. We give You the praise and we give You the glory because You have overcome the grave. You have overcome every single thing that brings us down, Lord. We give You praise that Your presence is here. We thank You that we are able to worship You anytime, Lord. Thank You, Savior of my soul and lover of my heart, Jesus. And thank You, Lord. And I thank You that the rest of this worship and the rest of this sermon and everything that is gonna be happening, thank You that it will be a blessing, Lord. In Jesus' precious name I pray, amen. Thank you so much, Echi, and over to you.
Thank you Leah and Kesia. Wonderful time of worship that you led us to. I would like to welcome each and everyone who has joined us and I want to thank for the wonderful time that you are spending. Excel VBS is being a ministry that has been quite long working among kids and their focus is not based on any denomination. They only focus on extending and educating the kids with the knowledge and the wisdom of Christ. And I'm so glad that they started a chapter in UK and Ireland, so together it's been an year. And we've been in this country, you know, we are come here as a part of our life job without having our parents or grandparents with us alone when we are bringing up our children. I myself found it really hard to find time to spend with my kids and pray with them. And I always thought that there will be a lot of things that if a ministry like this would be doing and that enabled me to be a part of it. Adundu ingene namuka iurup platformiloda devitthina devitthi deviraajithina kunjungalka enngala parni kodukam adindhe bhagamaidana you know, God enables me to be a part of this and enabled a group to come up. We are not working based on any church or denomination. It's purely to reach the young generation for God and I'm so glad I'm a part of it. And thank you for all your support. It's been you, each one of you parents who've been helping us and being a part of this and encouraging your kids to be part of it. And I'm so thankful for Excel to help us to be to organize a meeting like this for parents. And I'm glad for all the organizers and the teams who've been helping us to, you know, bring the parents together. And I don't want to waste any much time. All we are going to do is to have it can be an interactive session. It can be something that you can ask your questions. It is for you to be a part of this team as well. So I would like to welcome Binu Joseph Sir. He's the Director of Excel Ministries. He would have more to add to what I've been saying. And I welcome him for the message. And we will have a session where you can have some questions about this or clarity on what we are doing or any an open forum questions where you have any doubts. We'll clear that as well. And may I welcome Binu Joseph Sir and it's your time.
Thank you. Over to you. Greetings from Excel Ministries. Allare mandanachinu dayu namirimichanikita Excel Ministries director pastor Anil Elendu our line onda adham yatraalana nal program oladu undanikunnu palakkaadu peechi trishu root lak ingene program nuudalpa samay spendi yana okay dayu namanikrihikita lead ina Samia sister oru kathaavi stotram chinu pastor Anand machi devadasma machi parents ellam mandanam chinu thiribandu illan kum free atru orak ondakil nengal video sound chidal we can have more interactive sessions. Posely Excel may bandappatta pala alojal onda pala families onda vare ellam mandanam chinu okay Shambal brother nakarnu Sina sister onda and Excel team oru onda alladu veli nollor onda sister Anisha karnu police oru Anisha Anisha nammal Excel team nammal oppum 14 onda Anisha somewhere in UK or Ireland. Anisha, thank you. Anisha joined this sometimes onda Anisha Excel devroth nengal oru unnan chandosh aikim dayu malavu anikrihikita Parents new diva session today is a session for parents. You know, parents, parenti. Itto itto tough idal engle itto uru question nangal vikya we'll start with the question. I have a PowerPoint before we go to the PowerPoint. We'll just start with the question. Namukka devanamirikunna ettu milliya wealth thanda namukka devanamirikunna wealth thanda nekuparayam illan kila type pi ya indu olna chiam Epsi versus stuck onda okay devanamirikunna wealth thanda wealth but is a wealth God given to us. Okay, Sina sister. Okay. Video on jang kere count chidu nengal chalap rak pular program varyar onda ende uru mobile uru press on oru nengal video on chid kila ende video on angan uru press on da varyar nengal varayan nengal visheshikidil okay pastor Anand nekarni chandosh onda anikrihikita praship aarunnu oru rendu vairin di anikrihikita God bless you. Okay. Namukka devanamirikunna ettu milliya anikrihikam thana nanme thana most of most of your parents chare kya ancestors onu anmal datu alojal karnu an answer jandana varyar the children devanamirikunna nengal karnirikunna talamural onda laki taran go talamural onda nengal basic atru nengal wealth anikrihikam onda ettu milliya nanme onda varayan pannamal joli chidu duty chidu additional joli chidu lal overtime chidu yiddin a joli juchi prak pular lli pular kundia oru kari ondakil onda oru vallan uru li uttar vathan li adundu namal overtime chidu onda na shift a rendu muna addition edukunnu thirikari engal pinna chalavu varayan nengi family oru cool samay spend yana onda jana uru muna dosan continuous edukunnu onda thirio options nengal kach yar namal family le tu namal concentrate chidu na kunjungal ay kunjungal nengal
We need to change their shoes because they are growing. Even dress, six month after six month that it is not fit for them. Again, we have to change their dress, you know, lot of things, you know, we invest lot of money, a lot of, lot of things in children. Spiritually, when we come there as a church, as a family, how much money we spend for the spiritual growth of the child? So we say we go regularly to the church, we send them to the Sunday school, we have some youth program, we have some other, 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 uh, other gatherings for children. So how much money do you really spend for children's future life? Not for education, education you spend lot of money, that, that we know, but spiritually, how much money you spend? I can say mostly you buy a Sunday school material if there is possible. In Kerala, if we say that Sunday school text, we need to pay hundred rupee, the parents will say hundred rupee for Sunday school book? It's too much here, it's too much. But when they go to the shop buying fish? They buy, you know, the, the, the cheapest fish we say mati, you know, in Kerala we say mati, it is two fifty rupee per kg. But still we don't bargain, we buy it. We go to the school, we don't bargain for the, uh, materials, you know, uh, we buy the material, the school, last day I went, 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 went to buy this material for my children. So when I, I just took a text and it is written three hundred and fifty rupee for a text. I didn't bargain, I didn't bargain, I just paid the, paid the money and I bought it. But when we go to a, a, a bookshop, a Christian bookshop, then we see under rupee or I don't know which, which currency use, then we will be bargaining, you know, sometime we, we, we try to get. So mostly we, we think, you know, a spiritual materials, you know, spiritual things are free, we used to say it's free, salvation is free, everything you need to pray. Salvation is free for all, 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 all the thing you need to pray, okay, nothing is free, okay, that's, that's the basic things. So we invest more time to, for the children, we work hard for the children. So basically, before we enter into the passage, I want to, uh, read a Bible passage, then I will share a story. Um, it's, it's, it's from Deuteronomy chapter six verse six and seven. If you have a Bible, you can turn to Deuteronomy chapter six verse six and seven, I have a PowerPoint, I can just share the PowerPoint. But you know, when I share the PowerPoint mostly, uh, you'll be writing down everything, it is, it is our parent session. Not a must that you should write down, it, there is no exams at all, it is for some practical, uh, practical know, knowledge and you can apply in your family life. Uh, so that your children will be blessed. Uh, biblical perspective of child wiring, how we can take care of our children, how, how we can, you know, train them well, that's, that's the main session we are handling with, handling with. Deuteronomy chapter six verse six and seven, if anybody, you know, have the Bible, you can read it. My, either in Malayalam or English, I think the session will be going in mostly in English, sometimes some words will be used in Malayalam.
These commandments that I give you today are to be on your hearts. Verse seven, impress them on your children, talk about them when you sit at home. And when you walk along the road, when you lie down and when you get up.
This is something like a doctor give medicine to the patient, you know, when you lay, lay down, when you walk around, when you sit there at the home, always you need to teach your children. That's the, that's, that's the basic, uh, Bible verse for teaching, or the, 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 all testament instructions, you know. Maybe we can say, uh, it was a basic thing that the Jews used to do, they used to teach their children, give them biblical knowledge as, according their concept, you know. Proverbs chapter twenty-three verse thirteen and twenty-nine verse fifteen also, proverbs chapter twenty-three verse thirty, that also you can read. Says.
Do not withhold discipline from a child. If you punish them with the rod, they will not die.
Okay, that's, sometime Ireland you cannot, uh, say, some of the countries, you know, beating children and everything is, you know, prohibitive. Even you cannot rebuke, even you cannot correct them with the harsh words, I know that, proverbs chapter twenty-nine verse fifty, twenty-nine verse fifty. Twenty-nine fifty, it is about the correction, twenty-nine fifteen also you can read. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's the right verse and. Mostly, you know, we know these are the Bible verses telling about, uh, children, children, training the children, train up a child the way he should go. That is also, we can see in the proverb, child, no, no, train up a child the way he should go. This are the, uh, some of the verse we can see, uh, related with this, this passage. So, uh, all testament, you know, there is, there's instruction, teach them, teach them, uh, rebuke them, sometime you can punish them. Uh, twenty, verse twenty-three fourteen says, beat him with the rod and, uh, deliver him from sword from Seor. Proverbs chapter twenty-two verse six says, train up a child in the way he should go and even when he is old, he will not depart from him. So that's a basic, uh, you know, biblical, basic principle for child training, child training. So just starting with another, another, uh, glance, you know. Uh, how much time we spend for the children, for the spiritual growth, spiritual teaching? Weekly, weekly, how much time we spend for the, uh, spiritual nourishment of the child? How much time you spend, how much spend, time you spend? I mean, the Pentecostals are born against the new generation churches, new generation churches mostly, they don't spend time for the children. Uh, they think, you know, they don't get the offering, so they don't spend more time, okay? Uh, basically, the, the, the Pentecostal churches, they spend one hour a week, one hour a week, you know, which religion spend more time for, uh, for the religious teaching for the children? Can anybody say which religion spend more time for, uh, children's religious teaching, you know?
Muslims maybe.
It's Islam, it's Islam, Muslim friends, they spend more than twenty-four hours a week. Second, second place goes to Jews, they approximately, they spend fourteen to seventeen hours a week to train the children. We Christians? We Christians spend sometimes half an hour, if there is a guest pastor, we cancel the Sunday school too. That's, that's the way we do. But Catholics, Catholics, they spend more time, they spend more time for the education of children. The, 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 um, uh, the, the Pentecostal churches spend less, less time, but brother and churches spend little more time with the child, with the child education. Brother and churches spend more time, uh, again, okay, this, these are the basic, uh, uh, statistics. So Pentecostals may spend one hour a week, is the question, is it enough for, for a child? Uh, do you think that we are giving food weekly, weekly to the child, once a week to the children? Do you think that will be enough for the growth of a child? Now, we have a lot of programs in Zoom or regular gathering, church routine meeting under fasting, under what children gets, they'll like a biryani or pubs or something, they don't eat and they go, nothing they get. There is a convention, bombard preaching, a lot of things happening, children, what they get, nothing, simply they comes and enjoy, they see the gathering, it goes back. What we do for the children at home, they have mobile, they have television, they, they have TV, they have the remote, they have control ability, they have a lot of pro, programs. There are Paul Washer, one of the, one of the, uh, preacher, last day, there was a message, you know, he was telling, is it enough for a child, you know? Twenty-four into seven, lot of things they learn, do you think just spending one hour or coloring Noah's ark is enough to teach a child? Or is it for the spiritual? Is it enough to compete with the world teaching? But I'm learning that a lot, lot, lot of time we spend, but the, how much time we spend for the spiritual growth, growth of the child? There's a particular Bible verse from Lamiberus chapter four verse four, it says, the tongue of the second child cleave to the roof of his mouth for this, the young children ask for bread, no one break out it unto them. There is another Bible verse in Matthew chapter seven verse nine, Jesus asking a question to the, to, to the disciples. Man, you know, what man is there of you who, who, if his son shall ask him for a loaf, will give a stone? If your children are, if your child asks for a bread, will you give a stone? If you give a stone, what is going to happen? Do you think they are going to eat it? No, they will throw, where they will throw? They will throw everywhere, maybe to the TV, to the, everywhere, maybe that time the pastor is coming, he will also get a stone, you know? Because we given the stone instead of bread. Lamination, there is an issue arise, arising, you know, a issue or a. The young children ask for bread, no one break out for them. There are, there is bread, there is food, there is chicken, everything is available, but no one is there to break them for the children. So. They don't have the time, they know, they're, they're not able, parents don't have the time, they are so busy. So in the spiritual realm, when we say Jesus is the living bread. Giving living bread to the children. Those who eat will, shall live, e- e- live with me, you know, and I think, eating the bread, eating Jesus. So we are here to nourish the child, so question, who will break out the, who will break, break out the bread for the children? Spiritually, who will share God's word to the children? They need a little bread piece, who is there to break it out? Pastors, they have a responsibility of taking care of the church, they have believers, they should preach to them. Do you just think, you know, Pacha, on the Sunday morning, pastor is coming and playing with the children, ah, today we are going to have an action song, everyone come here, we are going to learn an action song. Then what, how you are going to respond? You must say pastor got some problem, yeah, I thought that the Excel Beatles program he went and, he will do such things. So people will not accept it, people will think, you know, it's not good, pastors, then the question, whose responsibility is to break the bread to the children? Is it to the Sunday school teachers, what Bible says? Bible says it's to the parents. Then what is the responsibility of Sunday school teachers? It is just a man-made system, we just have the children, the pastors may be appointed some Sunday school teachers, why? Parents are so busy, they are, they don't have the time to break the spiritual bread for the children, that's a, that's a substitution. But ultimately, parents have the responsibility of sharing God's word to the children, sharing the love of Christ to the children, especially to the, to, to father. He has the responsibility, mother, she also have the responsibility, should do that. Who will do that? As a parent, it's your responsibility, it is my responsibility, I should break out the bread to the children so that they will be fed spiritually. There was an incident happened in Truandram, Truandram, um, zoo, maybe it is happened in eighties. Most of the old people, uh, it's the first time they, they brought a bear, you know, bear to the, uh, zoo. So most of the people, you know, they go to the zoo and, the zoo and they just used to watch the bear. Then some people, you know, they want to see little more clearly, then what they do, they go up, they go up and they look down, oh, then they can see very well. So there is a family, they came with a small kid, maybe a two and a half year, holding the child on the hands, uh, maybe they went up to see, see the, uh, see well, you know? Then what this dad did, you know, that dad just, you know, holding the child, just, you know, he thought he can just make his son little fearful. Then he said, you know, I'm going to throw you to the bear, I'm going to throw you, you throw you down, then the child is, child started to cry. Then he said, you know, I'm your dad, I don't do that, they, they give him a kiss, oh, so happy. So after few minutes again, he did the same, but the third time what happened is that, third time unknowingly, this two and a half year child slipped and fell into the, the, the bear den. The, the child fell into the, uh, den and, uh, it, it, you know, you know, maybe pulled into two pieces. So even the parents couldn't believe what is, what, what they're seeing, they couldn't save the child. No one will do that, no parents will do that. Are we, will you throw your child to a lion or to a be- bear or to a, 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 a tiger, you will, you will not do that. You will say, you know, I, I love my child. Last round, these, the authority of the zoom, they close the top, top part and the mole was okay, but they lost their child, they lost their child. It's a mishandling, it's maybe a, 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 maybe a, a, uh, uh, accident happened. But you see in, in, in Bible, time of Moses, people used to throw children to the Nile River. Because the order of Faro. Most of the parents did that. But one parent, Jokobet, she said, I cannot throw my child to, to the Nile River, then what she did? She made a small box. She said, I cannot throw this child to the Nile River. The Nile River is just comparing to the world, you know, it's, it's a world, Nile River is just showing the world. If you throw your children, child to the world, then there are lions, there are tigers, there are crocodiles. Even the media, even the mobile, that's enough, this is enough, this is powerful, this is powerful than a tiger or a lion. If you throw them, if you just untie them, if you give full freedom, then you will be, you will not get them back. So you work hard, you come back, you don't know what the student sees, always they sit in front of the computer or laptop or in with the tab, they play everything. So they play the games, you know, last day, I, I could see some children in the church, not in India, outside. The worship is going on, what they do, they, they, they are playing temple run. That happens, the parents give a tab so that they can worship, let them play and enjoy, no problem. They don't watch what they're seeing, you know. That's a concept, so we should watch what they're seeing, mostly what happens, you know, nowadays, lot of games coming, like PUBG, like games like PUBG, lot of other things, you know. So personally, we have a young, uh, boy with us, he is almost seventeen year old, he was addicted to PUBG, he used to play continuously twelve hours. Once he played twelve hours, then PUBG blocked him, so his, his friends, everyone come together, they play, plays together, you know? Then he, he, he is not able to come up, what hap, what they play in PUBG? Nothing, they shoot each other, they shoot each other, nothing else. Another guy, we will buy a AK forty-seven and do to the child, let them play with the AK forty-seven. Both are same, both are same, once they shoot their friend, maybe in the mobile, in the game, their attitude is changing. So always the parents, you should watch what they play, what they see. First of all, we need to give them God. Teach them how to pray, they don't know anything, simply teach them how to pray, spiritually nourish them. You know, you read about, uh, Chandrakmeasakana, going Dhanial, of Dhanial. So when they were in another, another country, they were, they were taken as captives, but they never forgot about the God, they never forgot about the language. They still had their own culture, their own, their own food habits, they said, I cannot eat these things because I'm separated one, I cannot do it. Hey, king is telling, drink this, no, I cannot, we cannot do that. Teach them your mother tongue. Teach them your mother tongue. English, they will pick it up, no problem, but always understand, you need to teach your children the mother tongue, the Malayalam or other language, you should teach them, any other language. Which is your mother tongue, you should teach them, that's a part of the culture. If once they speak your, your mother tongue, that means they are still with the culture, sticking to the culture. Once they don't speak the language, that means they are away from the culture. So we have a culture, we have a culture, Indian culture, a Kerala culture that we have, you know, it is better, you keep the culture. If you go to America, you see the fifth generation, they don't know anything, no Malayalam, nothing, they, they see Malayalam as a very dirty language, dirty language. Because their parents said, oh, what a tough language, oh, very difficult. So then what happens, they get married with the people, maybe born about, you know, with the other, other condition, you know, cross, cross country, cross culture marriages. Most of the parents simply sit and cry, they say, gone. No church, they couldn't even attend for the marriage, they came to know that a daughter is getting married, but they couldn't attend for the marriage because they didn't invite. Last day, some family, some parents said to me, I asked him, your daughter is married, yeah, she got married, but I didn't, why? Yeah, she said to me, but I didn't go, why? I was not happy with the marriage and I didn't go. She got married with somebody, someone else, you know, so always understand, teach them Malayalam, teach them your mother tongue, then give them the God. And let the children understand there is a living God who can provide them everything, a big God, bigger than his or her problems. There will be tough times, difficult times, difficult situations, always give them God, God is the one who is going to take care of their life. Give them God, that you can give as a parent, you know. Next is faith, faith that conquers the world. So always teach them to trust God, they ask for something, you remember about your childhood? I don't know you, how you grown up, sometime you ask me for something, but your mother will say. But now, what do they say? Some, 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 some parent, you know, son was selling, uh, buy, buy a bicycle for me, then the dad said, you know, I don't have the money. What the child said, don't say lie, you go to ATM, you have money in ATM. Children knows everything better, you know, they should understand, money is not the fact, money is not the matter, it's a faith they need to build in their life. Faith that conquers the world. So I said God, then faith, God, along with the God, you add word also, teach them words. The children, those who born and brought up in Christian families in Kerala, they know, they know a lot of Bible verses, especially they start from Psalms twenty-three, Psalms ninety-one, they buy hard it. I know a lot of Bible verses that I, that I never learned in seminary, I learned this Bible verses when I was a child, before fifteen or sixteen year of age. So this is a good age, teach them, help them to memorize a lot of things, faith that conquers the world. Model, show them model, show them model, actions speak louder than the words. Maybe a biblical role models, you can show them, you can be a role model to the children, you can be a role model to the children, you can say, obey the Lord, live for the Lord. So be a model and show them some role models, especially Christian role models. Morality, morality, how to lead a pleasing life before God and teach them how to be morally right. How to leave a pleasing life before God and. Two things should happen at your home, every day. At least two things, at least. Mission of God, mission of your life. Why, why, why do they leave, what they are going to do, what they are going to accomplish to the life? They live just to eat. Sarifat, uh, you know, have philosophy was. Nowadays, some parents, they cultivate such philosophy to the children and they say, you earn money, you become rich, then you'll die one day, finish. Also, if you are just trusting on this world. If you are hoping for this world. You, you are, you are, you. Maybe, uh, worse than. A mission of God, there is a mission of God, but they fulfill it, to be the, the part of the kingdom of God, to be a kingdom builder, to be a, to be a missionary, to be a missionary teacher, to be a missionary nurse. Like Ida Esqatar, to be a missionary doctor, you know, mission of a young girl, Ida Esqatar, she is the one who started CF, one of the best medical colleges in India. So we need to understand the purpose of our life, teach the children, you live with a purpose, don't simply make them to eat and live and grow, you know? Teach them, you have a purpose and you are living for a purpose, discipline them, discipline them, time and daily life of person. Discipline in words, actions, temperament, relationship and thoughts, always discipline your children. There is, there is a piece of wood, which, which, which you, which you use in, maybe in kitchen. So I, so what do you say for that? So I saw it, it is, it is on the, maybe, uh, in the guest room, you know, I saw, I thought, you know, why, why you are keeping here? It's not like that, it's not like that, correct them, correct them. Uh, maybe there is a system, there is a rule, you know, but even still you can correct your children, you can, you can rebuke them, you can discipline them. According to Bible, you should do that. I think another vast is, uh, can remember the days which our, which our parents used to punish us. This is a little hard, nowadays, you know, children, yeah, children get nothing. Even the children, you know, they, they say to the parents, hey, I will call the police, nine, one, one. Because they have such, such training, so, uh, action, temperament, relationship, uh, train the children to be disciplined in relationship, in their thought life, in their thought life. So if once they are able to control your thought life, then they succeeded. How they deal with the friends and, and relatives? How, how do they respond when the guest comes? How, 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 how do they keep their manners? So teach them. Teach them even just, you know, eating a banana, you should teach them to children. So teach them, this is the way you need to peel the banana, banana half, okay, then you bite again, feel it, again bite. So you need to teach them, sometime, you know, you go to a, another, another house, you see your child, peel all the banana and the full banana is in the hand. Then you feel shy. So that's the way, so if you have a small children, you can, you can train them well. You can see Kerala rubber planting, you know, uh, we can go to a farmer, one who plant the rubber. How you plant the rubber, what they do? There are some branches comes, what they do, they cut the branches, then the rubber goes straight. Maybe very, very thin and very lean, then what they do? Maybe a fall and there is, there is, there is, you know, there. So after few years, maybe after two years, three years, nothing, it's growing up, growing up. Maybe. They take care well, the same way till the age of five. Enjoyment, so start training your children early. After five years, it is very tough, they are growing up. Two year, three year, start training them, fourth, start training them. Now they are ten year old, it is so tough, they will ask hundred and one questions. So it is better you train from the early age. That's all I have to, but another question. I know most of the grandparents are not with you, but the grandparents, they don't encourage to punish their children. So who is responsible to train the child? Is it for the grand parents, is it for the husband or is it for the wife or is it for both? It's for both, husband and wife. If as a mother, if you are not able to cut or punish your child, it's your problem, it's your problem. Your child, it came out from your stomach, from your womb. So you need to train them. No problem. Someone was telling, you know, punish them like punishing elephant. Again, he said, you know. Some parents, they sit and cry after beating, after punishing the child. Control your temperament, don't punish the child for, you know, without reasons, you know? This is the thing, this is what happened. You can just correct them, that you should do. So be careful. Home, home, living together, sharing together, praying together, building together, build each other, parasparan building. How our childhood was, just a little tough, our parents may be little tough, but still it's a blessing, it's a blessing. We don't keep hatefulness to other parents. We don't do that, but nowadays, our children, they may close the door and they go, go inside, they sit inside. There is a mommy punished me, so I am going to eat supper. Don't, don't encourage that, don't encourage that. They should understand, it's just because of love, we punish them, we correct them. It's because out of love, we teach them. Our future, what do you want to become, what God thinks about you. Always understand, children need to understand the will of God. What God thinks about our children. When God has a plan for your life, always seek God's will. Don't do that, train them, guide them, but let them freely select, let them freely move. Let them seek the will of the law. Be careful with your words, use of mobile, use of a dress, have a prayer schedule, a lifestyle. Especially when they take the decision about their partner, you need to guide them. They are twelve year old, they are thirteen year old, just tell them, you can select a life partner. But make sure he is godly, spiritual and from your own culture, your own culture. We are Malalis, it is better to get married, Malayali. We are Tamilians, it is better to get married, Tamilian. Always understand, partner from our own culture is the best. Tell the children, this is the best decision. Need to be careful of the dress which we buy. Sometime, you know, the, the, the things which are written on the T-shirts, the pictures, the images. So the writings, what, what is written on the T-shirts, we need to be careful. So nowadays, the fashion is that, you know. That become a fashion, tone, type of dresses, that become a fashion, you know? Olden days, you know, people used to wear the dress to cover the body, nowadays, people used to wear the dress to show their, no, expose their. As Christians, we need to maintain a Christian culture at our home, Christian culture at our home. Not only on Sundays, Sunday. Always keep a Christian culture at our home, at our home. Christian culture, we need to obey, we need to understand, we need to train them to, to, to have a Christian culture in their personal life. You understand what I mean? A, a, a Bible reading habit, a prayerful habit, attending for the fellowship, respecting God's servants. Living, you know, living together, loving each other, forgiving each other. Also the time when I go for the marriage ceremony, if I have a time to preach, I used to share one. If you are, if you fail to create a heaven at your home, you will never enter into the kingdom of God. I don't think you are going to heaven. First of all, our family, that is a heaven. If your family is not a heaven, then I don't think that God is going to take you another heaven. Let you may feel the process of the Lord at your home. That's what we see about Samuel, Samuel, where he grown up? Samuel, we are coming to Samuel, you know? First Samuel, chapter two twenty-one, two twenty-six, three nineteen, there we can see about Samuel. Three families at a time, living together, three families, family of Hannah, family of Penina and family of the priest Eli. Three families, living in same culture, they are going to the same church, he is the pastor, Eli. There are two blessed children, Ofni and Phinehas, when, when they were born, they were blessed. But last one, we cannot see her as a blessed children, they, they were living together. Hannah got, Hannah having, having no children, she prayed and she got, she given, God given a child named Samuel, given to the Lord. Samuel brought up in the process of the Lord, so he was in the temple of the Lord. That never been that you need to take your child to pastor and pastor, this is my son, you take care of him, it's not like that. Make your home a, 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 a temple of God. How it is possible writing on, on the door, Jesus is the keeper of the house. Samuel was growing up, Samuel born, brought up in, in the temple of the Lord. Again, it says, his word never went in vain. Whatever he said that happened. So Samuel, life was dedicated for the Lord. And again, we see there, uh, Samuel grew up before the Yahweh and child Samuel grow on. An increase in favor both in, both with Jehovah and also with men. Samuel grow in the process of the Lord and Lord was with him and none of his words fall to the ground. First Samuel, chapter four, you can see only one person, that's Samuel. No, Penina's children, not even Elise. Our incident, there is another incident happened, then we will close and we will just give time for discussion. Maybe within, maybe you do, oh, ten minutes, we will close, then the discussion will end. First Samuel, chapter three, or three, chapter three, why I can boom? Or when come to the fourth chapter, we see there is a war. Ofni and Phinehas, they both died. Someone is coming and telling this news to Eli, the father, the father, what happened to Eli? Eli fell back, bro, no, broken his neck, finished, his life is also over. The same thing, the wife of Phinehas was pregnant and she heard the news, she fell down, given birth to a child. Then what happened, she too went to be with the Lord, gone, gone. But she given name to, to her child. Can anybody know the name of the child?
Ichabod.
So given birth to a child, then she died, name of the child was Ichabod, Ichabod. Our parent, the meaning of the word Ichabod, these are. Without glory. Given birth to Ichabod and mother died, father died, grandfather too died, finish. On the fifth chapter, on the fifth chapter, you can see one man, his name is Samuel, Samuel. Samuel was known as the, as the, as the prophet of God. He, he is the one who anointed lot of, lot of kings. But later on, we see the history of Samuel, but the children of Samuel. So the question, do we need children like Ichabod? Do we need children like Samuel? So train them well, every day, make, make them to sit and pray. Family prayer, you start the family prayer system. I know you live in another country, that's not the matter, your family need to be a home, a, a, a heaven. You can learn lot of money, money can buy nothing. You cannot buy, you cannot buy, buy sleep, you cannot buy enjoyment, you cannot, you know, you cannot buy health. So this is the right time, you have a children, you have a thirteen year old son, thirteen year old daughter. I have a, I, I got a son, he is eight year old, sometime he used to come and say, Papa, come, Papa, please love me, love him for, for a while. So I just sit with him, hug him, give him some kiss, then I ask, you know, is it alright, is it okay, okay, okay? So he is growing up, he become fifteen, he become seventeen. Will you spend meaningful time with them, will you love them? We can see lot of families, they may be rich, their children may be brilliant, but after a few years, you cannot see their name in God's book. Even I used to think about my childhood, I was not that much brilliant enough. I was not brilliant enough, I was a fearful guy, never went to a stage, I have a lot of stage fear, nowadays, nothing at all. Even, very tough, very tough, you know, I, 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 I went for paces, there was nothing to speak. It's paces, you know, we will go and stand and butt. So then I used to think, you know, why should I compel my children to do things which I, I'm, I was not able to do. Let them grow, let them grow, encourage them to do that, encourage them to do that, don't compel them, don't. Give them opportunity, positively encourage them, correct them, take some time and, and, and love them. We are living in, in a time such as of Moses. Nai ladi is equal to the, the world, you know? If you throw your children. How can we protect our children? I know there is a program, uh, somebody was asking, we are doing puppet show. We have sanitizer, what is our sanitizer? Blood of Jesus our sanitizer. How we protect our children? Our hands are short, you know? Then who can, God can protect our children, God have a plan for their future. He was safe, why? The mother was so sure that he will be safe inside that, that small box. Small ark, nothing is going to harm him, why? It was perfectly protected, in the same way, our children will be protected if you seal them with blood of Jesus. If you seal them with the Holy Spirit, if you seal with the, with the prayer. They will be safe ever and ever. They will be safe once you give the children to, to God. Moses, he was protected not because of the, 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 the finishing of the ark, but God is, God was there to protect him. Why, God has a plan for the child. Why, God has a plan. That they should understand, God has a perfect plan for our children. Don't say you are fooled, don't say that you are not able to do that. We need to understand, our children, they are a blessing, they are a blessing. So what this father did, father came back from office and saw the son made lot of scratches on the car. He was so, so angry.